Everyone's in.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome.
Mokler, Packard.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? I'll have one when you add P block to the agenda. Any others? Hearing not approve agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Uh, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All the same sign, motion passes, approve minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard? Hearing none. Uh, the bond levy resolution to amend 2023 budget and levies.
So I checked with the state and what we need to do is decide what amount we're gonna levy for, of course. And then we'll have to do that resolution. Um, that just amends our budget and our levy request, and then I submit that to the state.
Well, I guess some what you told us last week. I don't know if we have any more much for alternatives.
Well, so that's for the whole forty-two point eight million.
Yeah, right.
But are we picking up the city's tab the first year? Are they? You're just a listener, aren't you?
Yeah. I guess I haven't been on any discussions about that. I'm not sure.
You know, one, um, one possibility would be, um. Well, I don't know, can we prepay? Um, well, we probably can't prepay any of the bond expense for ten years. But we could create a bond sinking fund. Um, so the way that would work is, um, we would create a, uh, a fund, put it in an interest-bearing account. For a number of years and then as soon as the first bonds were, um, able to be redeemed, which, uh, from, from, from what our, our, our bonding. Um, advisor tells us would be ten years, um, then we could prepay a big, a big chunk of them.
But we, we can't hold that for ninety-five years.
Yeah, yeah. Well, then, you know, I mean, we could, we could use it to, um, offset the tax rate.
Yeah, that's gonna have, that would fluctuate every year. It would have to be set the levy every year, but.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, it's gonna be a, a chunk of change the first year until everybody gets figured out what their share is gonna be. I mean, the city's gonna, if they decide to come with us. They'll pay their fair share. It's just.
Yeah.
Who's gonna do it the first year?
Yeah, I, I, I just wanna make sure that, um, the, and, and I don't know if, if, well, there's no way to bind future commissioners. But what I'd like to see is to make sure that that money gets used to offset the taxpayers' expense. As opposed to, you know, using it as like a budget increment. So it's always a temptation when something comes in as income. Um, you know, to use it, um, as part of the general levy to be spent, but, uh, you know, I, 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 I think if, if we can keep, keep it separate. And create a tradition of keeping it separate so that it offsets the cost of these bonds, um, then the city's contribution actually decreases. Um, the burden on taxpayers in years to come. And, you know, it's.
Whatever, whatever comes in out of this bond levy goes into a separate fund for that bond payment each year. And so then when, whatever the city kicks in, however they do that, that would go right into that fund too.
Perfect. That would work. Yeah. That's a good way of doing it.
The only other thing you can do is, I mean, he did say that, like back loading. You know, where you, where you have smaller payments here to start and bigger payments at the end. The only thing is I don't like the idea of that real well, cause.
We're paying more interest.
Yes.
Exactly. Yep.
That's my downside of that.
So somehow we've gotta keep this, you know, so we can keep, we're gonna have to do it so. So that tax levy is gonna be about the same every year. We're gonna have to be able to hold the city's money, cause my understanding with John is that they don't plan on using thirty years to pay for this. So if they pay their share in ten years. So we can keep our levy the same for everybody, just for their budgeting purposes, we're gonna have to be, we can hold their money, right, in a separate account, since it's not actually bond money.
The way I understand it, and I'd have to check with the state on the accounting for it. But I think it would just go into that bond account, but then it just wouldn't get spent out, you know, it would be.
But we, we hold bond money for five years. Without spending it.
But it can be, um, you know, yeah.
I hadn't heard that. I don't.
Cause I. Eight years ago or whatever, well now, state auditor was down, I was like, well, what if we start levying for the new law enforcement center now? He's like, well, you can only hold it for five years.
Okay, that's capital outlay. So that's a little different.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be for a capital outlay resolution where you're saving up over the course of five years for something.
Yeah, that's. Throw in the bond money, the bond account then.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we sure can.
He's muted now.
Oh, now you're muted, Tom, but we could hear you.
Nope, you're still muted. I don't know.
Must be having trouble on his end.
Yeah. Anyway, that capital outlay cap, uh, in length, that dates back to the property tax. Legislation was done in the nineties to cap property taxes because, uh. Governmental entities, especially school districts, were getting big capital outlay, uh, bank accounts built up. And, uh, uh. The governor at that time felt that that was unfairly taxing current residents, you know, to the benefit of future residents. And so that's why that one is there, and I think she's right, that's just for capital outlay.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so if, if we can indeed create this, um, it will make a big difference in the long run. And, um, uh, you know, I, 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 so thi- this, this, um, one point nine five would be, um, uh, an even. Even over the life of the bond. Is that right?
Barely even. Um, it could fluctuate a little bit. If our value goes up, then that levy would go down. Um, the dollar amount, I think stays barely even, and that's where Travis is saying, if we wanna keep it fairly even. We just hang on to some of that city money for a while and use a portion of it each year. So.
Um, that, that's the, the, the mill rate.
All the mill rate.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the correct, that, that's the, at, at, for the, for, for, for twenty twenty-three, that would be the mill rate. Then it would fluctuate based on the, the grand list.
Right.
I see Tom got bumped off. He must be having trouble on his end, but I'm sure he can give us some good advice to make us back on.
Was calling on the phone, maybe?
Good.
Do you know what interest rate he was using?
Um. Not sure. I think he could probably tell us that.
Some of those figures is what he was going to be big, uh, bringing to us for today's meeting, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it looks like interest rates are gonna continue to go up for a bit. Uh, you know, the pundits, or I shouldn't say the pundits, the economists are guessing five to seven percent will be where the Fed will stop. And we're be around four now. I think the T rate the other day was four point one.
It's connecting, I think. A second ago, we didn't show a microphone, but now I see one. Just looks like it's muted.
Oh, he got unmuted for a second.
Wonder if I can request to unmute it, maybe, maybe if you see something.
You might have to unmute everyone, but yeah, he's unmuted.
There we go. Can you hear us, Tom?
Might be best to even call, if he could call in.
I wonder if I just send him an email here.
If you guys can hear me, I'm sorry, but I can't hear anything.
Can you hear us now?
We can hear you. Yeah, he's muted again.
Can I ask a question? Just. And, and you, it may be a dumb question, but just for an understanding aspect of things. So when you guys. When you guys set the levy, so we have our basic tax levy that, that's set. And expenses that are gonna cover all the county expenses, and then we have the opt-out already to cover the transport of inmates. And then we'll have the debt service fund on the bond amount. So are we gonna have like three lineups of collection? Or will the opt-out be combined with the debt service?
No, but it's a general fund opt-out, so it gets combined with the general fund. When it comes in, the bond, um, fund will be completely separate.
Okay, and so the opt-out got set with the general fund.
Right.
Okay, so it's just, it'll just be two separate.
Right, yep.
Thanks.
We lost him again.
Oh. Maybe he's gonna try again.
Yeah, sometimes it's the way you've got your computers.
Can you hear us now, Tom? And do you want to call me on the phone? Yeah, let's do that. I, he's just having trouble this morning with his computer. Okay. So let me look up his phone number here. So Andy, if we wanted to use this phone, do we dial nine or how do we? Eight to get out, okay. And then the one and then, okay. Which button do I push for the speaker? There we go.
Is there a volume button on that?
Hi, is Tom Grumman available?
He is on a, in a meeting right now. If I take message.
I think he's in a meeting with us. This is Clay Cowley.
Oh, okay.
We're having technical difficulties.
Yeah, he's trying everything. One moment.
That's as good as it gets for volume.
Oh. We hope he's agreeing with us.
What's it?
Do you need to move the microphone or what?
Hello?
Maybe?
Hey, Carrie.
Hi, Tom.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
I don't have technology.
Well, who wants to start here?
What interest rate are we at today?
What interest rate?
Yes.
Well, interest rates, so you know, I, I mean, I don't have that. If you want me to get it, I can get it. I can look at where interest rates are at, but, um. You know, we're about where we're at, where we're showing in the presentation.
Which is what?
Let me look here. So the average interest rate on thirty years, we're looking at about, we're seventy-two.
And what was the dollar amount that you said we needed?
Is that directed to me or to Dick?
Yes, Tom. Sorry.
Okay, I'm not, I'm taking a leg or something here. Um.
That's okay.
I didn't, I don't have that number, I guess. I mean, the number I ran that had was for forty-two million, two hundred thousand. And that was the number I got from either you or Dick, uh, uh, the actual bond, um. I think the actual question was for forty-two million eight.
I thought you had run it for forty-two point eight. I think the paper I had showed forty-two point eight.
Okay, yeah, that could be a forty-two eight. My title on this is forty-two one. I don't have the. So it's probably for forty-two eight. And the annual payments on that were around two point six, two point six million for the total payment.
So we need to go two point six for the first year. Get through this first year.
Well, we, I don't know if that was directed towards Carrie or me, but, um, so two point six could be the number, but we, um, I talked to Carrie the other day and, um. You know, because the city, you know, I, I don't know what their timing is on their first payment, you know, there's some principle there that we could move. Move down the schedule and look at maybe doing, you know, two million, um, the first year. So that the taxpayers don't get hit right away with that amount, and then when the city's money comes in, then that would be added to the, the fund. And then next year, hopefully you only have to levy, you know, two million again, or two million one, or something like that. Does that make sense?
We don't know, the sitting time, you know, right?
No, yeah. Any idea, Katie? The city timing?
In my opinion, I think we need to have a larger conversation of core organization, before we can even decide that.
Right, I understand.
So Tom, let's say the city doesn't decide to build. And we've bonded for forty-two point eight million, can we give that nine point six, can we pay that back right away?
The nine point six of what the city would be.
Yes.
Their part of it? No, I mean, no, not really. I mean, um, you know, when you've issued a bond, the bonds have a, a call period. In this case, because it's thirty-year bonds, they would probably have a call period of ten years. So you'd be looking at a ten-year lockout before you could start prepaying any principal. Now, that doesn't mean you couldn't put the money, you know, you can designate it and, and, uh, not touch it, put it into a, that's a sinking fund, whether it are an interest over that time period. Obviously, the interest you earn on it would be the same amount as you'd be paying the debt service, um, even given the interest rate you have out, but. That's one avenue, but once you sell the bonds, then you're, you're kind of locked into the schedule that you can get some of the data that the issue is priced. If we, and I, some more background, I mean, we talked, um, if I, Carrie, I, I don't know if she gave you some background, and I don't want to throw her in a bus, she can talk herself, obviously. But, you know, we were looking at doing this now, you know, passing a resolution after the ten days, um, tier period on the election. Passing a resolution that authorizes the actual issuance and then issuing the bonds as, you know, as soon as we can, you know, just in case interest rates continue to go up. Or, you know, we can wait, um, cause you guys feel more comfortable too, up here in a little hesitation about maybe what the city wants. And we can, we can wait. We don't have to, we don't have to let the financing push the, push the project along. Um, so I, I'll just throw that out there.
I don't think there's hesitation. I was just asking the question.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
Just to. Do some round numbers thinking about this, it, uh. Four point seven two percent interest on forty-two eight. A year's interest is one point or one point nine eight two four billion. So if we were to go down to two million, we're only going to, uh, uh, knock, uh. Pretty small amount.
Do you pay all the interest upfront?
Yeah.
What you have right now scheduled is about nine hundred thousand in principal to be paid. Um, so we could, you know, the interest doesn't go anywhere. Once you're set, um, you know, the interest just accumulates, starts accumulating. Uh, but where you have some leeway is how much principal you pay back in that first year. And right now, there's about nine hundred thousand being projected to be paid back in, um. In December of twenty twenty-three, December one of twenty twenty-three, we could reduce that by, you know, six hundred thousand to get you down to the two million level. Um, yes, that does push it down into the lower years and it does, it does increase, uh, your payments, um, on the latter years, but that can be spread out over the remaining twenty-nine years. And the increase would be tremendous, but, but again, it gives you some leeway that first year if you want it. If not, I mean, we can do the, we can levy to two-six, um. But there was some concern about, I think about levy, you know, going in full effect and not having the effect of what the city. Will, will be participating in, and, um, and then I think there was an opt-out or additional funding for the transfer of prisoners or being held for the next couple of years while you're building this. So I was just giving you ideas if you guys are thinking about that.
Is, last week, we did, uh, kinda taught, just toss out, I think it was a pie in the sky, I figured, if we went with like, say, two point three million. And, uh. The anticipation that the city would be kicking in. Something that would. Come close to the, to the balance. Have you thought through anything based on that at all, Tom, or?
No, I think, I think that'd be very doable. The, the, the issue is, um, you don't have government, and I'm just a little worried. I mean, once you. Set the levy and it gets spread, so we do two-three, and then we just leave the debt service at two-six. And, you know, the three hundred thousand has to come from somewhere every, the first year of this, you don't wanna go into. I mean, it isn't, it, it, it isn't like you can go out, I think, with additional money somewhere on the line. And I don't know where the, I don't know the city. Um, you guys, I don't see, I don't know on the one city there's, I think you do have one, I'll see the citizens, maybe two citizens, I think, maybe. Um, but, but the whole concept hasn't, hasn't really looked at this. They really have intentions of moving ahead with you guys, at least what John told me, but. I mean, no numbers that really talk about or when that number, that check will be cut for the first time. So I think you're a little nervous. No, if you're talking, I'm sorry, and I'm back up a second. Now, if you're talking about moving, moving the amount down to two million three, and you guys are gonna levy for two million three, then I'm fine with that. That, I, that should be fine. Um, but I guess I thought I heard, leave it at two-six, maybe we'll get three hundred thousand from the city, even though you didn't say that, I thought that's what I kinda heard, and then we just leave it at two-six. Um, that, that's what I was talking about. That's, that, that one would probably be a good idea.
Yeah, as I recall from our discussion last week, um, what we had talked about doing was trying to smooth the tax rate. Um, so that, um, during, for the first two years of the bond, so that while the facility is being built. The tax rate isn't bumping up and then going down again. Um, and so, 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 so smoothing, um. Uh, payments, um, for those, those first two years. And while it does mean that, um, and, and that, that would be principal repayment, right? Um, and while, while that does mean that, um, you know, expenses will be slightly marginally higher over the long haul. Um, it means that, you know, people who are living very close to, uh, uh, the, the line. Um, won't have to have a, a two-year tax bump while we're double paying for both the facility and, um, the, uh. Uh, you know, inmate boarding costs. So that, this is what we talked about last month or last week. Um, what are the, you know, how, how could we actually do that?
I, I think you're. I, I think you're right in that we shouldn't depend on a city payment, you know, it could very well be they. Their payments wouldn't kick in and uh. Until we actually open, open the jail, that, that'd be kind of worst case, I think. But we shouldn't plan on much in the way of city payments until we're getting close to occupancy. But uh, you know, that, that can change. That's, that, that works either, either way, but we uh. We uh, with what we know right now, we, we, you know, we should, we should make our. Obligations balance.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
I agree. So then it's, it's really just that number you want to pick for the, for the first year. Well, I mean, it's really once you set the first year, kind of think, thanks, we, we issued on, kind of think, thanks, what it's gonna be for the next few years, but.
If I'm hearing this right, so after. If we pick, for example, we had picked the two, six today. And the city comes through with money somewhere down the line. Pays their share. After ten years, we can actually buy one of the bonds, we can make a payment, correct?
We can pay ahead on this bond.
Yes. We can pay ahead on this bond. So if we leave it at two, six right now, which I don't like, but, but if we leave it there, the money that we get from the city. Hopefully, that can actually be put into an interest account. Even though it's not probably going to be as good as a four point seven two, at least we give, you get some interest on that money. And at the end, when this bond comes up at ten years, we could use that plus pay that money and to pay the principal down. So then it would lower taxes in ten years. Am I correct?
We can do two, seven. You said two, seven, two, six?
Two, six.
Two, six right now. Next year, we can change it to what it needs to be.
That's what, can we do that?
Yeah. Yeah, because we'll be setting this levy every year.
Okay, so that could be something we can adjust. I mean, I, I don't like the idea of it, but I, I know what you're talking about smoothing it out, but. I don't think that's a possibility right now, to be honest.
Safety sense, we do the two point six.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's that I don't like it, but I think that's what you got to go with right now, just from the standpoint, we do not, no, we got so many, we got a lot of no. You know. I mean, that's my opinion, but I don't know. If I'm hearing everything right.
Yeah, so, so Tom, uh, you know, taking what Mike just said, um. How, how, how would it work to uh, uh, you know, set it at two point three? Would you then just change um, uh, the bond repayment schedule?
Right, we would, we would just, the first year, we would structure it around a payment of two point three. If that's what you wanted to do, and then um, and then the rest of the schedule would just be level, level debt after that.
Yeah, so, so Mike, it, I, I, did you?
Yeah, I understand what he's saying.
Yeah, so, so in other words, we wouldn't be dependent on a payment from the city.
Well, the thing is, we're not paying the principal down as much.
Right, right, but, but we're also avoiding um, uh, yeah, a big, a big tax jump and, you know, there are some, for some people that. You know, particularly farm people who have a lot of land and, you know, these payments, I mean. I'm not a big fan of the property tax in the sense that it, it, it does burden, um, you know, people who farm more. Um, but, but this, this would moderate the impact on people who are farming, you know, close to the, close to the edge. And we wouldn't have to depend on the, on the city to do it. Um, it's one year, it's not going to make a big difference because we're really only looking at nine years that we can't prepay. Next year, the city comes in with us and I, I believe they will. I mean, I, I think it's their intention to do that. Um, then, you know, that, that makes up, that makes up the difference next year. So, 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 so taxpayers wouldn't have that one year bump. Um, you know, I, I, to me that.
Does add three hundred, two hundred and sixty six thousand. To the bill with, with added interest. You don't pay that three hundred thousand dollars right up front. That the normal payment would be, that's, that's an extra two hundred and sixty six thousand over thirty years.
Over thirty years, which is, you know. I don't know, To- Tom?
Yeah, I mean.
Can you?
That is taking three hundred thousand in principal and, and distributing it over that, that thirty year period. So. Um, because that's what'll reduce your payment down to the two, three. So, yeah, I mean, it, it does increase your total cost and, 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 and the next year's payments, the next, the level debt will probably be above the two, six after that. Um, but then you'll have some, hopefully some of the money from the city to offset that, so you wouldn't have to levy as much next year. Wouldn't be a two, three next year, you know, if the city kicks in, it'd be a, you know, maybe two million there, and I don't really know. I mean, initially, the numbers showed that they would be like, two, three, six hundred thousand, but I don't know if they, I don't know if that's the actual number or not, so.
Yeah, and, and, and so it also spreads the cost of the bond, um, you know, to future, future taxpayers. Um, who will be benefiting from, you know, the, the asset.
Right.
So what happens with, let's say the city comes there, the city pays the ten, at the end of ten years, the city's done paying. So now, and our payments are, we were depending on their money into that payments. Maybe I'm thinking this wrong, but. They'll know, we'll no longer have them payments from them after that.
No, but we'll be holding that money.
But we'll be holding that money, so we'll be all right that way. Okay. Man, I'm just trying to, you know, when something goes away.
And at that point, then you'll. We can refinance.
Right.
Or we could pay ahead, or they just take that money and give it out over the next remaining twenty.
Yeah. I was just trying to.
Yeah, no, no, yeah.
Go away.
You can take that money and just do a prepayment on it without banning it, then do a refund, at that time, the rates, you know, are similar or better. I, I wouldn't advise it if they're not, I mean. You can restructure it, restructure it at that time. Uh, with just what would be the county's portion of it, and hopefully, I mean, if everything equals out in the way it should. Then, you know, it's just your payment that I, you told the taxpayers you were gonna, you know.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so we, we really, uh, you know, if, if we use this method, it would not be principal over thirty years because we could prepay principal. Um, you know, after, after ten.
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so, so it wouldn't be, um, you know, having to pay interest on principal for the entire thirty years. Because after ten, we could repay a good deal of that principal from the, um, you know, the excess of. Payments uh from the city over what we actually have to pay each year. So we, we would have a, a fund there, um, you know, to, uh, to call some of the bonds and repay the principal. So we're really looking at. Um, early years principal, like for the, you know, first, first ten years, and that would be offset by interest. On, um, you know, the, 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 the bond, bond, the bond fund. Um, proceeds from the city. So we're, you know, we're looking at a very, very low. Interest rate spread there.
Why do I keep hearing hopeful?
On that plan. Yeah, there, I, I mean, I think there are a lot of uncertainties, but um, I, you know, I, I, I've. I think we can trust the city um to come through. Uh, you know, and, and so we won't know exactly what their, their payment plan will be, but we know that, uh, that there will be a payment plan. Um, and, uh, and, and, and we're not banking on that for the first year, right? We're not banking on the city coming through with funds for twenty twenty three. This, you know. And it, it, it does smooth the tax rate. I, I, I like it.
So if you want to do that, can we just make it what our portion would be?
So if, if we, well, and we should probably defer to Tom here, but my, my thought, thought is that we, what Tom can do. Is to structure the bond in such a way as this year's payment is two point three.
Right, but that'll be higher than what it ended up to be. Our, our payment for the next, how many years is going to be like two point one?
Tom?
I mean, if, if the city takes in, there's, there, there are a lot of money, right? Is that what we're assuming?
Yep. Yeah.
Right, I mean.
Yeah, but, and then, I mean, I could run the numbers and show, but I, you know, if we do two point three, I mean, obviously that's going to have an effect on. Those other payments. Um, and I can't tell you right off the top of my head. What, what that would be.
We can do either one, it's just if you wanted to keep it. What it would normally, what it would be going forward. And then Tom, are these monthly payments or are these annual?
Um, you can buy your setup, uh, semi annual interest and then annual principal.
So that changes. That changes the payment too. Right. Cause I've been figuring it monthly. So we're safe at two point three.
You would think in two point three.
Yep.
Yeah, so your. Your payments would go to, instead of the two point six, they would, they would go to, um, the two point, two point seven.
For the, for the subsequent payments.
Right, right. We, if we push that principal, take that principal out, move it down. Um. So, um. Yeah, that's what. Is you have a monster. So it does increase it, you know, by, by that amount. There's, there's also, um. You know, something, I guess, and I just noticed this again, I don't know if you remember, but to, to lessen the impact on taxpayers, we did. We did, um, we did grow this, your taxable value by, um. By two percent, um, for the first couple of years, and then in twenty six, we just, or twenty, yeah, twenty six. So three years away, so twenty fifteen, twenty three is already in. I haven't put that number in here yet. Actually, it's greater than what we projected. But, um, we grew, we grew it at two percent for the first three years a little bit, so, so we were always going to have an increase. And I don't know if you guys remember that or not, but we, we did have that in there, try and level, try and put that in there. I can take out that growth factor. Uh, but I said, like I said, it was only, it was only in there for a couple of years. And I can't remember why we did it. I knew why we did it. We always do that to lessen the impact to taxpayers, that initial personal payment. Um. Uh, but anyway, so that's why it goes to two, seven, and we're going to go to two, seven, anybody just based on the growth. So it's right around that two, seven number, it actually increased. Um, um. Cause now we can go out to twelve, one of fifty two, whereas before, when we were looking at this, we didn't know if we're going to, if the bond issue was going to be. Before the twelve, one payment, and we were looking at a twelve, one, fifty, one final payment, and now we're looking at a twelve, one, fifty, two, which is thirty years. Which was what was in the bond question. Uh, we couldn't go longer than thirty years, so now we're at twelve, one, fifty, two as the final payment. So that actually helps out of the, um, on the debt service a little bit. Um, so anyway, I don't know, hopefully I didn't confuse you and add too much to that, but. Um, the two, eight, three sounds like a very doable number, it doesn't sound like it's going to impact the taxpayers, any, any addition of what we told them.
Okay, my next question then, Tom, is when we get this money, can we put this on interest?
Yes, yes, definitely. Um, uh, so you can earn. The problem is, uh, is it because these are tax exempt, you can earn, if you can find it, you can earn as much on the, um, on the bond, on the investment. As the rate on the bond. So it's a, it's an IRS mechanism to keep issuers from issuing debt and, and doing what they call arbitrage, trying to make more money. Um, in the taxable market by reinvesting their funds. Um, there is a way to, to, to invest it and not worry about the arbitrage, but you have. You have to spend it down in, in, in the allotment that they allow, and that's like, you have to have so much of it spent. Within, you know, the first six months and the first year, and I don't, you guys aren't going to be able to do that because you won't even have your final plans done. Before the first six month period is done. So, I mean, we could look at that, and I can, I can give those numbers to Kerry, but I don't think you'll, but the short answer is, you can invest it and earn interest on it up to the bond rate.
That'd be fine.
You know, it plays four point seven.
Which will still be a sizable number, but, you know, you won't, you won't make payment on the bonds based on that, we'll put that way.
No, but hopefully it's not costing us as much money.
Right, exactly. Right, so forty two million, I mean, right now, I don't know what, we would really want to do CDs, I mean, there's some programs out there, I don't know if you guys have ever heard of South Dakota Fit or Kerry has, such, they actually have. A construction fund investment program to invest public funds, and they're a South Dakota entity. Um, or, you know, you can check with your local, local bank down there, um, you know, I. Just that, that's a lot of money for one bank to take, so that's something that we'd have to look at, where, where we're going to put the money. I can't, by, by rule, I can't help you invest the money. I can, I can give you ideas, but I can't help you invest the money. Um, it's a, it's an SEC regulation. But if you have a, a banker that you deal with all the time, I can't remember, what is the first, is First Dakota in town there?
Yes.
Yeah, we've got First Dakota, Bank of the West.
Core Trust.
Core Trust, First National.
Okay. Yeah.
Wells Fargo.
First National, the First National at Omaha or the First National at Sioux Falls.
Yeah, just the old, the old Brookings Bay.
That's First, First Bank and Trust. We've got First Bank and Trust.
Yes.
First Dakota National, but not a First National.
Yes.
Correct.
We got First Bank and Trust. That's it, it's not a Brooklyn.
First Bank.
Right now, your general, holding your general revenues, your general fund money, it's better.
Yes.
Definitely, as we get closer to those closing, well, we need to talk to somebody about if they want that, if they want those funds. If you want to come in there and what they could do for you to invest the money. Um, and then, um, you know, there's, like I said, a couple of different avenues, local banks, uh, South Dakota Fit, and there's even some. Bigger national players that'll help you invest your money too.
I think we need to find somebody who knows what they're doing, some of this.
Yeah, realistically speaking, we'd probably gain a couple percent interest, uh, you know. The, the limit is what our bond issue is for, that uh. Realistically speaking, we.
realistically speaking, we, we'd be able to trim our, our net interest costs, uh, by a couple percent.
Yeah, I think there's a little C Ds out there over three right now.
Yeah.
Well, treasuries are, you know, for near-term, which is what we're looking at, it's an inverted yield curve now, so, like, short-term treasuries are really good, they're over four percent.
Yeah, I mean, if your treasury's like at four percent right now, yeah.
Yeah. I think we know what the number needs to be.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to make the two point three million.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion passes. Tom, do you have anything else for us?
No, I don't think so, I, I've started on the, started on the offering document, hopefully I'll have that done, um. The, the only thing I guess I'll put out there is that, you know, we're moving ahead with this, um, but, um, historically, um, I don't think we're going to get it done, get it through the R E C C in time to price before the end of the year. Um, we need to set the interest rates, um, the, normally, you don't want to be, the rule of thumb is you don't want to be in the market, especially with a big deal, um, after this, after the, the Wednesday before Christmas, so that'd be the fourteenth this year, um, normally, we just kind of say the fifteenth, but the fourteenth. Um, you don't really want to be in the market, and I don't know that we'll have a rating and have every, you know, have the document ready to go to the R E C C and the rating back before that. Um, and the reason is that folks, you know, kind of closed up for the year, you don't get as many players, and a lot of times, especially in a volatile market that we have right now, get, get some people that are bottom, you know, they'll shoot your rate, they'll give you some, they'll give you some quotes, but, you know, it's usually higher than it would be if, you know, everybody was, everybody had their book open. So, anyway, I just wanted to give you that heads up that, you know, if, you know, this will probably get pushed into the first week of January. And I know that, I don't know if that makes a big deal for Carrie and her books or not, but, I mean, I think that's, my advice is that we don't try to push it in before Christmas, or at the last week of December, uh, but if, if rates are going crazy, um, again, right now, they're kind of holding steady, um, you know, maybe we do, but usually January's a good time to be in the market for tax exams, because there's a lot of, a lot of reductions going on at that time, a lot of bonds get paid off in December and January, so there's a lot of money that's looking for investments, and usually the muni market, if you've invested in a muni and you get paid off, you're looking to reinvest it in another muni. So, that's usually a good time for you to be in the market, uh, because there's a lot of money chasing, um, fewer dollars at that time. So, um, fewer issues like yours, that tends to be good for interest rates, uh, so, um, anyway, just thought you'd get a heads up on that.
And that still puts the payment at December of twenty-three, correct?
Right, we can still do, we still do six, one, twelve-one payment dates, even if we issue, even if we price it January.
Okay.
It'll be interesting to see what the Fed does, I mean, we definitely won't have anything ready to go before the Fed beats again the first one in December. If, if they react the way the market hopes they react, that not, you know, hammer, hammer the market again, then, you know, rates might actually go down, but, you know, not real on wood when I say that, but, um, but we'll see what happens. Um, we're kind of at the whim of that right now, because we can't get in front of that.
Anybody have anything else for Tom? Thank you, Tom.
Yep, sorry about the technology, thanks, thank you guys.
Bye.
Bye.
I think to make it really clear that, you know, at least I have a hundred percent faith in the city coming through with what, what, uh, they've promised us to do, which is a percentage of the total. And, uh, it sounds like the feeling of the council is that that should be done over about ten years, and that's what we don't, for a fact at this point. When that starts and how it's going to be structured over that period, we don't know much about, so, that's the only reason for the uncertainty, we're, we have full faith in the city, in the city council.
I'll talk to John to get on their agenda, the, so they can decide what they want to do somewhere.
Yeah.
Drew? Heard it, anybody have anything else on the bond? Good. So, I'm going to recuse myself, start with the feedlot. Meeting over to Phyllis.
And this discussion, I turned it over to Drew.
Uh, at the last minute, uh, Mr. Jensen has gotten a lawyer and is asking for more time to attempt to apply for C U P for his feedlot. I think we have to give him that extra time as a courtesy to the lawyer, you know, no. He's got a lot of, he, he wants, the deadline, what, December ninth?
Yeah, he, he wants to apply by December ninth. He wants six, and that might apply for the C U P by December ninth. And, um, continue to look into options for removal of the cattle in the meantime, I mean, that's been communicated, I think, in no uncertain terms, then, because there's no guarantee that a C U P is going to get approved. So, he needs to go back and begin that process and start working through that, they want until December ninth to have time to get that in, and I guess then implicitly us not penalize them for that.
So, he would get to keep the cattle there the whole time? I mean, I, I, I think that's the big issue, right? That there's no, um, health and safety guarantee, you know, this is somebody who has not followed the law up until now, and, um, it seems to me that, I mean, the, the cattle need to be moved.
I don't like the idea of, right, because part of this is going to be going around and getting waivers from the adjoining neighbors, and I don't like them being put on the spot, guilt trip. I'm very uncomfortable with that, I just don't know a way around it. Um, I'd be a lot happier if they were having that discussion with cattle removed.
Agreed.
I, I, I agree too, and I, you know, I, I, I think that that, that has, has to be done, um, by, by the deadline.
Can, discussing what our options are if he does not remove the cattle, um, I would like to discuss at least a portion of that in executive session pertaining to potential litigation. And then, I don't know if you guys want to come back out of that and have further conversation about this, or or if you want to continue to have dialogue now and then wait on that.
So, is he, is he saying that once it's December ninth, so you give the lawyer an opportunity to, to peel off the coat? But, in the meantime, is he trying to find the whole creative cattle, or is that not even an issue?
His lawyer says he is.
His lawyer says he is, that he's trying to find a home for it.
Have any of them been moved today?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
The only thing he's done to date, um, is put in more infrastructure. And that's not a good sign, it's not a sign of good faith, um, that he continued to put in new infrastructure after, um, he received, uh, notice, um, that this was an illegal feedlot, um, so I, I, you know, I, and I'm thinking about the neighbors too, um, uh, you know, it, it just seems really, really unfair um, to, uh, to the surrounding properties.
Makes it tough for them to have neighbors there the whole time, you know? Usually want to do the best thing for your neighbor. This is questionable, that's the case here, you put them under undue circumstances. I mean, it'd be tough for me if I was his neighbor to say, hey, get him out.
Yeah.
I-
Do we need to be going into executive session?
I think it'd be a good idea to go into executive session and explore where, where we're at legally and where we could go forward. And we may or may not, uh, uh, depending on what we learn, then, uh, go back into regular session and, and, uh, discuss afterwards.
Is that a motion, Mr. Hammond?
That's a motion to go in, into executive session.
Lynn, I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Executive session. And can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
For action or?
Well.
Do we need to go back into? Not with you, but you'll be in the room on what? The meeting?
Um, I don't think, well, I think we can. That'd be fine.
Okay.
So, what are we doing?
We'll go back into, uh, executive session, or what do you call it?
To try and, to try and.
That a motion?
I'm getting.
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we need any motions whatsoever? First and a second, Brett, I just talked to him one.
I'll move to come out of executive session, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And is there anything else?
I move to adjourn.
Wait a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a happy Friday, guys.